All right, well, good evening. Welcome to the September ninth twenty-four regular council meeting if they can call the roll.
Absolutely. Councilman McCallum, Councilmember Tenor, Vice Mayor Lau.
Here.
Councilmember Burt, Councilman Winker.
Here.
Councilmember Ku.
Here.
Stone, for the record, six and.
Thank you. And we're going to start with a special order of the day proclamation honoring M A R T smart week of August twenty-sixth, August thirtieth, twenty-two four. I'll go ahead, read the proclamation. We're at United States, guns are the primary cause of mortality in children and teens. Almost every day, a child gets a hold of a gun and unintentionally kills or injures elves or cells. Whereas an estimated fifty-four percent of gunners don't lock their guns securely, and an estimate four point six million children in the United States live in a home with at least one unlocked and live gun. And whereas, try to strike when guns aren't properly stored, whether it's a child inadvertently harming elves or others, or someone stealing and misusing the weapon. And whereas there are steps everyone, regardless of gun owners, can take to ensure it can't access guns and endanger selves or others. Researchers that one of the most effective pieces is to implement secure firearm storage by storing all guns, loaded, locked, and separate from ammunition. And whereas, Smart Week raises awareness and promotes five tangible steps following the SMART acronym to reduce child injury and death caused by unsecured firearms. So all guns in your home equal. Model responsive behavior around guns, ask about unsecured guns in other homes, recognize all of guns and suicide, and tell others to be smart. And whereas, the city of Palo Alto admitted to contribute to public safety, creating a safe environment, and enhancing the wellbeing of our children. Now, therefore, I, Mayor Stone, mayor of the city of Palo Alto, do commend the E-Smart program and recognize August twenty-sixth to fifth as Smart Week. And I believe we have somebody to. Ms. Ashland, would you like to go ahead?
Thank you. My name is Si Ashland. Thank you, Mayor Stone, Vice Mayor Lau, and esteemed councillors for past proclamation. Since the city has the Secure Firearms Ordinance and has gone into effect, and in collaboration with Palo Alto PTA Council last August and this week, this last week of August, all the back-to-school events, Back-to-School Week, we have shared the B messaging with the majority of Palo Alto schools and will continue to do. We appreciate your efforts in hating the community as a whole, as this is the responsibility of all us to comply with the law. I've provided a smart postcard and brochures on the dais as well, the Smarties, to help you remember the acronym. We thank you very much for your support.
Well, you and thank you for your advocacy. Would you like others who are here with the SMART program up and could take photo with council as we present the proclamation? Okay, we'll move on to the changes, additions, and deletions, city manager.
Here, we have no, just to your agenda.
All right, thank you. And that will bring us to public comment. Just wish to remind the public, we know we're allow virtual speaks, so all speakers have in person. We're also capping the total of your time to thirty minutes. Comment goes beyond thirty minutes, move the rest of the public to the end of the agenda. So you'd like to speak, please submit your comments to the clerk now. And while the clerk is asking how many speakers we have, we can go over a few ground rules and expectations. So clerk, how many speakers do we have?
We have ten speakers.
Okay, so, ten speakers, we'll do ten. First, most importantly, Palo Alto values include intolerance. We should create a safe space for express their views, and intimidate harassment of anyone in the room won't be tolerated. Second, amendment protects an individual's right to express their views in this public space. And while we are able to implement reasonable times to man restrictions, we can't prevent a sir from expressing their views, no matter how much they disagree with it. So if a speaker is saying something that you disagree with, or you're troubling, you're welcome to excuse yourself from them until that person's finished their comments. We won't talk, members of the public interrupt a speaker. Everyone's guaranteed there to speak, but it is limited to two minutes of public comment. So withhold all your comments, both during and after some speaking, ask them clap or make verbal remarks. They may make somebody feel uncomfortable in expressing their views. And ask that you honor people's most face and right to express selves and respect the forum that we created for people to share the perspectives. And we can continue.
Our first speaker, Julianne W. Julianne W. Moving next speaker, Marie M. Lisa Marie M. Moving to our speaker, Maura O.
Good evening, Mayor Stone, Vice Mayor Lau, and council members and staff. Mine is Maura Omen. I'm a resident of Palo Alto, the executive director of the nonprofit Youth Community Service. I'm here to invite each of you and the community to participate in the September eleventh National Day of Service Remembrance. Flyers are available in the back of the chairs. Please join YCS and your community and neighbors to make measurable positive impact in our local community through activities such as filling donation drives for nonprofits such as E A G, We Hope Car at School Project, and more. Create crafts for cause organizations such as Animal Assisted Health, Evenson House, the East Palo Alto Senior Center, Inc., others. Or join us in-person service events, including Stanford Blood Live and volunteering at Fileoli. So the multi-week peace picnic and prayer service, which will be held on Wednesday, September eleventh, from five-thirty to seven-thirty, right here at King's Plaza. So there are affairs for both events at the back in the room, and I also think there are dais. In addition, YCS is organizing enough school-based service projects where youth will express gratitude to our responders and initial workers who work tirelessly to keep our communities safe and healthy. Our certain events will come in a variety of service projects with our partners during Compass Week, which from September twenty-fourth to twenty-ninth. Thank you for your support, YCS, and these events. Details can be found on our website, communityservice.org. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Om R.
Good evening, council members. My name is Om Rajan. I hope you are doing well. I'm here today as a representative of the Palo Alto Climate Coalition. Ask, hey, I urge you to reconsider any plans of banning the Palo Alto Airport in the Baylands. The Baylands are critical in maintaining biodiversity and protecting the many endangered species, many endangered species living in it. Mission to this, as sea level rises, as sea level rises on our shores, Baylands will play a vital role in preventing our homes from flooding. The expansion of the Palo Alto Airport will not only increase its air pollution, but also jeopardizes the environments, livelihoods of the people in our community. Expanding the airport goes against Palo Alto commitment to sustainability and conservation. So let's prioritize preserving the replaceable natural base for future generations, rather than extending it for unnecessary development. Thank you.
Our next speaker, Steven R.
Good evening, Palo Alto councilors. My name is Steve Rom. I'm a resident of Old Palo Alto and a member of NET Palo Alto. I thank you for the opportunity to speak. Hey, I would like to discuss rail grade separation, a group of decision that will affect the fabric of Palo Alto for generations to come. To me, it inherently is a city plan issue. How do we envision the future look in Palo Alto, rather than considering it as a series of jointed decisions, a particular crossing? To me, the best solutions have been those that eliminate official division of our D by the rail tracks. The only solutions that do this aboard tunnel and evuck. All the other solutions proposed thus far still leave tracks as an uncrumbled wall for city accepted at crossing points. Recent, Richard Moore, an international and locally recognized designer, has joined Reconnect Palo Alto, has proposed citing new plans via duct in North Palo Alto, being at the Menlo Park with a new rail crossing San Francisco, San Francisco Creek, leading to a viaduct over Litton Street, connects downtown to El Camino. The Palo Alto Avenue vehicle connection to El Camino is closed, and that area is diverted to a park and ped path. The existing county station becomes the transit hub station at its current location, and there is associated minimal elevated rail stand at University Avenue. Up to now, the account has not dealt with this whole planning problem. The viaduct offered elegant solution. If we were to bring a citywide viaduct back into consideration, viaduct insulation for loosens can be an automated process with minimal customization. The decks for the punts can be cast single-site and interplace as construction per significant construction redots. I thought as the engine considerations presented, the viaduct back into consideration. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Tom M.
My name's Tom Martin. I'm a resident of Palo Alto since nineteen-eight. I'm speaking in favor of the viaduct or elevated railway. A very big advantage of the elevated railway is that there is no taking of residential property by eminent domain, which will save much money and eliminate delays and heartache. The elevated railway, most all construction will be the current right-of-way. This will minimize construction time and the terrible disruption of current travel patterns that will occur with the other options. With the elevated railway, cars and bikes will go under the train, straight across at the same level from west to east as they do now, out walls, roundabouts, tunnel, and berms. The elevated railway provides a safe, open space which can be attractive, usable, and have potential for one and biking path. Also, it eliminates the problem of complicated injury and probable cost overruns from utility relations. It is an attractive and quieter system and is easily the best solution for our city to be art, beautiful, and connected for a hundred years plus into the future, even though it might cost a little more. The elevated railway deserves reconsideration and a competitive bid. Thank you.
Our next speaker, Noel S.
Good morning. Moved here twenty-three years ago from Hong Kong. One of my concerns was three mixed children, Chinese, half white, and Kong. They were considered to be white, and in parts of America, they could have been Asian. Fortunately, here, they're just kids. And because of that, maybe I kind of naive thought that everybody else's kids were just kids here. And I found out over the last eleven months, working closely with Arab Muslims and Palestinians in our community and outside it, this is not true. And over the weekend, I had, I'd go to the details, but you know, heard a lot of testimonies from people who have their coming home from school, and there'd be murderers, they're called terrorists, they're being called Amers. How do you tell your seven-year-old child how to respond to these things? What are, what are our cheers saying? What, you know, what, what are these, what are these kids who are making these accusations hearing at home, that they feel that can go to school and some seven, eight, ten-year-old kid these? And, and, you know, having been here for months, asking for a ceasefire, I've heard some of the rhetoric, I imagine that some kids at home are in the rhetoric, and they're laid out on their Muslim kids. We really need leadership, this town, that says it is not okay. We need some recognition that, that what our government is supporting in Gaza is not okay. The Arab and Muslim Palestinian community is under siege. It's under siege, and it's also in our country because government is paying for this, and our government is is giving one side attention and ignoring the other side.
Your time is up.
Please, we need a ceasefire resolution.
Our next speaker is Tom H.
City council members, thank you for hearing public comments. My name's Tom Haxson, and I coach cross-country track and field at JLS Middle. While the city of Palo Alto Middle School Athletics from currently manages PAUSD's School Athletics, many have found their services to be inadequate. The JLS cross-country and track field teams have been intentionally coached by and rated by parent volunteer judges. Although our two teams raised over fifty thousand dollars in revenue for the city last year, the program has provided our students with a minimal level of support. To address this, I found a nonprofit organization here with the mission of seeing registration fees more efficiently, support our student athletes. The hall are nonprofit, supporting a thriving cross-country team of sixty-one JLS student athletes. We would like them to be able to rent their school and participate in all the competitions, but we need the city's support. Not yet been able to obtain support from the middle school athletics program or from the director of these services. I wrote to you on Saturday, and I pay that two of you have already with me and are falling to try to help our students. I hope to have the opportunity to the rest of you. I hope to hear from you. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Eve E.
Mister, city council members. Palo Alto is going to be approaching severe congestion in the years ahead. Because of the housing mandate in Sacramento, we all, there are going to be a lot more homes in the years ahead of Palo Alto. So there's going to be more congestion, more cars, more pull. And meanwhile, we have a train running down, as you know, and seven mid-crossings, four of those are leveled to trains, and something has to be done about it. The question I have is that why haven't you or the committee taken seriously the idea of elevated railway? It seems like ideal solution. I've looked at the Charleston Meadow and Churchill solution that came out, Dunn, a contractor, and to me, just don't make traffic flow, pedestrians, cops, bikers, just don't make sense. The roundabouts, et cetera, et cetera, taking, taking some people's property doesn't make sense. And elevator rail is, is, would do it. And as one of the previous speak pointed out, it is perhaps more expensive, although I don't know, because they have no serious studies yet, any studies. I started this, this exercise in thinking years ago with a group that I belong to, and only recently hooked up with a serious design engineer, Richard Elmore. And he has inspired us to believe that it can be done, and in a very beautiful way, that would make city a place to live in the future. Thank you.
Next speaker is Avram F.
Avram Finkelstein tonight. So I don't know if at the last meeting, study session, I should say, where we had a discussion about antisemitism and Islamophobia. Did anybody catch at end of public comments, Sid Lauing comment to what was really a packed audience of mostly Zionist Jews? And what he said, I want you to keep them in back and do what you're doing. But Sid didn't say what it is that they've been doing. And, okay, so he's doing this, he's speaking in code, and you keep coming back to the city council meetings, all costs, you then, the indefensible terrorist of Israel. Slick also has his fingerprints over the Bethlehem website as well, encouraging city members to come and speak at council meetings. Hey, it's all the First Amendment, go ahead, Ted. The same slick though fuses repeatedly to see his view on the issue. He remains silent on the ongoing fight in Gaza and on the crease settlers in the West Bank who are murdering indigenous Palestinian people and stealing their land. Slick, it's time to break your public silence. Where do you stand? Are you going to, and cowards move, ghosts that come beyond this issue? Come on, you're going to happen to be the mayor, and I'm going to have a special award for you. I'll surprise you with that, that's be coming up. You know, it's going to be a complicity award, and I hope you'll have a photograph with me when I do present to you. I find it as a fellow, just despicable that you remain silent on this issue, while and people here in the council, why don't you speak out?
Final speaker is Julianne W.
Good evening, members and council members. My name is Julianne Wong, with Santa Clara Valley Bird Alliance, here to talk about safety design. Can you, so I want to demonstrate how effective the virtual clues can save birds. This slide shows two windows. The left is from a mat building in Menlo Park, the white one is from Monteville City Hall. Both them, both them have bird safety freed pattern, which is ceramic pattern on the glass. Both these designed have been approved to quite effective to preventing bird strikes and comfortable for build from inside, because you can see it hardly is it from inside. Next slide. This is a building in Monteville. We transparent glass in some areas freed to glass visible to birds. This building is not in bird safety area, so it's dead to birds. A state of bird collision performed here in October twenty, two thousand twenty-two, April two thousand twenty-two. What you see here, a light, please. So red does show that, show the bird collision happened, and red does show the dead on the ground nearby. So you can see the area in yellow where the bird friendly treatment was applied. There are almost no birds in there. We can also see that birds almost collide at a lower elevation. They can also collide four stories up. Terms include this little bit.
Your time is up.
Okay. You so pleased that the safety design.
And that concludes public on items not on the agenda.
And thank you. When I move to council questions, comments, and announcements. Councilmember Burt.
Thank you. So I just wanted to update colleagues in the community that I believe previously reported, I'm not certain, that ETA has granted a million dollars toward preliminary design of the future of our university avenue multimodal transit center. And on Thursday, they also agreed to create a bird ad hoc committee. Will bring together, there's a total of six agencies that have stake in this, that be VTA that has the, on the station, Caltrain, the city of Palo Alto, Stan University, SAM Trans, this is a critical southern term, and AC Trans. And so we hope to gather all those bodies to begin a process of only looking at the long-term plan, the medium-term plan on improving circulation. The voters approved the Cory Road extension for bus ends only. And so I'll keep posted. Committee is tentatively Margaret Abbe Koga, who is official member on VTA and or the MTC board, Chair of ETA, Sergio Lopez. So we'll have the presumably incoming chair that's on the seat giving attention, and myself. So that's the update. Keep you posted.
Thank you. Any others? And seeing that I've got a couple. After consulting with the vice mayor, we'd like to allocate two thousand dollars from the council contingent fund for a high faith peace picnic this coming Wednesday, on September eleventh, to be hosted on King's Plaza outside City Hall. The peace picnic has been going tradition that nights the community to honor the victims and eleven, their families, first responders, strives to transform tragic day, one of peace and unity building. Event is free, everybody, there's going to be food, multi-faithogram, and we'll conclude with a candlelight vigil. So hope everyone can attend, and they're in peace here at City Hall in King's Plaza. And then the, my other is to let the community know about an exciting upcoming summit on teen mental health. It's called Beyond Books, take place on October fifth, from ten a to three p.m. at the Park Community Center. Free lunch is provided, and some stag will be included. It's going to be open to every one of all ages. Event made of twenty-five local youth and representatives, a variety of partners, and designed to be able to foster and understand across generations, provide valuable mental health and substance use resources, and to reduce stigma associated with seeking help for mental health issues. And their aim is to create a support base where youth can come and realize they are not alone. So encourage everyone to attend that as well. So those are my two updates. I see no lights. So then move on to the calendar. These are items two through thirteen. We'll take public comment on those.
There are no requests, no hands are raised.
All right, the motion to move the consent count.
So, second.
Okay, a no votes request to pool. Councilmembers.
Yeah.
Go on. Five and. Nine.
All right. No one five and nine. Also, Mr. Tenor, any other no votes, request to pool? Okay, none, then clerk can call the vote.
Councilmember Burt. Vice Mayor.
Yes.
Mayor Stone.
Yes.
Councilmember Tenor. Councilmember Ku.
Yes.
Councilmember Burt.
Yeah.
Councilmember Lethcon He.
Yes.
Motion case.
All right. Councilmember Tenor, would you like to hear no votes?
Yeah. So both five and nine are no for the very reason talked about actually during one of the prior Policy and Services meeting. So at meeting, we talked about procurement, and kind of my issue, they're not being submitted. So good example of that is actually in five. So about almost five hundred thousand dollars for some genders, one bid. So it was another bid, but it got rejected. But why it got rejected was not specified. You know, I think especially, say, lost money last year, and money this year, we're losing in the next three years, according to Long Beach Financial Cast. You know, we've been jacking up utility rates, double digits every year. You know, a lot of people are like laid off, so it's tough times. And so we owe it to people to, to do some diligence, right, to actually get multiple, to actually try to make sure that the people's money is spent. So, so that's with five and then nine. And then something I also talked about at the Services meeting, is we have these extensions, and this company is a great company, I don't know. But, you know, there's, there was nothing there about the difference. How did they do on the product tracks? Was it a bad job? Don't know, like totally silent. So I don't mind extensions, but if we extension, there should be some sort of indication of how do they, how do they, are they doing a good job? And, you know, if they did a good job, maybe we should edit.
Okay, thank you. Next is city mayor comments.
Thank you, mayor. Members of the council, I get the clerk's assistance with the slides. Actually, while we're making that transition, do want to note for the record, item number five, which is the purchase of generator equipment for our utility department, that staff was actually able to identify an alternative means of procurement, which used the quarter purchase program, and reaches through other ACs. So did not require utterly a specific for this segment, and appreciate staff's work in order to identify cost-effective means to proceed. Then, next slides. I just wanted to remind the public that we have our City Hall Open House Wednesday from three to five p.m. This is our first doing anything like this, and really forward to opportunity to share community members the work that staff are doing within the building, well as, hopefully, as a first in providing opportunities for members of the community to learn more about career in public service, and wait for some behind-the-scenes to be recognized, and hopefully, and some folks to take it on as their. Next please. Also, reminder that we have our annual community survey now out. We are currently in the phase where statistical polling was sent out, so community members have received mail and mail notifications of the survey, for those selected to be part of random sample. In addition, starting next week, there'll be opportunities for the community members to stay in on the survey and have that comment the total responses. And also do want to remind everyone that security has always got to be top of mind. So you would look for, in this case, a survey that identifies the cityofpalo.org as a source, that you can clearly sit back to our website, other sources, through our survey company, the company Polco. And I know that there are a number of different surveys that are currently ongoing, whether it be human-related or other inquiries, community members. Next slide, please. Then also want to flag a special recruitment ongoing for ARCs and Recreation Commission created due to a vacancy. This is a term that extends through March of two thousand twenty-six, so a fairly long tenure. Our term would be roughly less than two years, and great opportunity for good members to get involved. Excuse me, application due by October sixth for this mission, might please. And also want to note that the reach codes that the city council obviously approved are for final approval by the California End Commission, I believe, next week. And as such, will be going to effect in early October. So this was quite a bit of work and extensive question by the city council in bringing forward these tremendously leading. these tremendously leading reach codes. And so we look forward to seeing that go into next month. Next slides. Finally, just want to note a number of events that have been organized over the next month. Actually, it's only running through September. See, we've got nearly a dozen events that are planned, and such, really hope that there are opportunities for every member of the community of something of interest. And few of these annual events are very highly popular events, and look to seeing community members for a wide variety of. Slide please. And finally noting upcoming city council meetings next week on the 16th, got two stations, one on Caltrain focusing on allocation, as well as their initiatives, and the art, long-range planning. Then proceeding to the fun week on the 23rd, we've got the report, recommendations from the policy services committee on procurement. On the 30th, we have closed in only. Did want to note for council members that exactly that that will be full evening on the 30th, although again, still focused on closed session. We'll have more information on the specific closed sessions coming up. And then finally, number of items on bucket from October 7th and beyond, noting that the 13th is a holiday, and as such, we'll have a city council meeting. With that, back to you.
All right. Thank you. And that brings us to our break on the, I think, are we okay to move for? Sure. Councilmember Vinker.
Just a very quick correction. I am grateful on the up and follow events and activities that it says there's a town hall meeting up, but I want to take, there's a siblings USA domestic town hall meeting, not international sister city event, it's on Demakni and voter access.
Thank you. And okay, seeing motion to move in the break later, then we'll go into our session. So we'll be in closed session for the rest of the night. We have four closed sessions, conference with the city attorney regarding existing litigation, and then the appeal of the city of Palo Alto from Okamina. Item 15, the council city attorney regarding potential litigation regarding refund of parking in fees paid by Hamilton, Hamilton Real LLC. Then 16, conference of property negotiator, 4,000 middlefield road, that's also known as the cupper lease. Then finally, item 17, conference with labor negotiators regarding National Association of Firefighters, Fire Chiefs Associations, Peace Officers Association of Palo Alto, Police Management Association. So it will be a closed session for the rest of the night. We can take public on those items or entertaining a motion go into closed session. Are there any requests to speak?
No mayor requests to speak, and no other raised.
All right, do we have a motion to go into question?
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Burt, tagged by Councilmember Vink.
All right, take vote, Vice Mayor Lowing.
Yes.
Councilmember Ku.
Yes.
Councilmember Burt.
Yes.
Councilmember Tanak.
Yes.
Mayor Stone.
Yes.
Councilmember Vinker.
Yes.
Councilmember Le Haynes.
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
All right, thank you. Again, we don't have any action items tonight. We will be in closed session for tonight. We will return to adjourn, but that will be many hour now. Thank you. All right, we'll back out of closed session. We have no reportable motion. With that, we are adjourned. Good night.